Okay, we're gonna bring the meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody to the Select Board. We will start with the public comment as usual. If you have something you would like to say to the Board, just raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Come to the podium. Provide us your name and address. And you have three minutes to speak your piece. Anybody? Tick, tick, tick. We're gonna roll along then. We'll go straight to Dr. Moore, Superintendent, Voice River School.
Thank you once again for allowing me to speak to the Select Board. In the fall, I try to get out and just give you an update on where we are in terms of enrollment in this particular year, where we are in the Masway project because it's coming right along. So I'm pleased to say that when we include the PEP students, we're 2,205 students this year. So it's one of our highest enrollments since I've been superintendent in the last six years. So I'm pleased to report that, which switches me right into the Masway project. So I know that the Select Board has been very supportive. We're in the process of adding four classrooms, one dedicated as a music classroom, and then three that would allow us to have the space we need in order to educate the students that come to the Masway School. So that project will be done by Thanksgiving. And the second meeting in November, we'll invite all of you to come and basically open the building in its new form. Probably the most obvious thing for the community driving by isn't the four classrooms, it's the front entrance. So the front entrance, as you're seeing, is coming right along, and it was designed with the safety of the school in mind. Historically, for whatever reason, both elementary schools had their principals and secretaries kind of buried in the front, and new safety protocols. Really, we want the principal and the secretary's out front being able to meet and greet people. So as people come into the building, they'll be entering a log festival, and they'll be admitted by the secretary. It allows both the secretary and the principal a line of sight, and I know the chief has worked with Carrie in terms of making sure that what we're doing makes a lot of sense in terms of the safety of our staff and students. So that was the driving force. It was actually a good of projects. We were able to do the front entrance because we were successful in getting a $560,000 grant from the state. And the four classrooms were part of our operating budget. And so when we hit Thanksgiving, the second meeting in November, I think it's the 14th if I'm pulling it off the top of my head, I should look. But we'll get an invitation, and I hope that guys can attend and see the new front entrance, see the four classrooms. I think the community will be very, very pleased. And you've seen some of the nice work that was done on the windows. All the windows were replaced this summer. They have that evergreen kind of trim that enhances the brick, and then we put in a gray silver tone filling around the windows, and you can see that from as you drive by the school. Think it's really gonna look nice. That will be the theme that will carry through the building over the years. So as we have to replace siding or upgrade, we'll upgrade with that beautiful silver tone board around our windows, and that will be based on wear and tear. So you'll see, continue to see that pattern carry through the building. And when you go into the front entrance, we actually put in a wood veneer in the front entrance. It's absolutely gorgeous. The craftsmanship has been really high-end. So that's the Masway project. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about the Board's goals for this year. And the big one is, as I've talked about in the past, a middle school. So we were very pleased to have Scott on the committee last year and the year before that. And silly him, he's agreed to do it again this year, so we'll keep him busy. He's gonna participate in a envisioning workshop on the 15th and 16th of October. And Scott, if you can only do one day, that's fine. You don't need to do both, but if you can give us both, that's also great. But it works for your schedule. So the visioning exercise is really to think about what we want in a new middle school. The committee that Scott was on last year came up with two options. One is to stay on the site we're in, and the other one would be to look at property other than the site we're in. And we spent a lot of time looking at available property in the district. And as you might imagine, there isn't a lot. When you get into the larger pieces of land in the district, we were able to identify about a half dozen, and it didn't take long to whittle that half dozen down to two. And that two soon became one because the piece was owned by the university, and the university wasn't interested. So right now, we're still looking at an off-site location, but the committee was pretty dominant in terms of its voice being heard, that the preferred site would be where we are now. So that hasn't been decided by the school board because I'm still doing the homework on a remote site. So the school board should be making a final decision related to site this fall, sometime in the next probably month. Quite honestly, it'll be relatively soon. So we're gonna spend 17 months, a year from March, February actually, a year from February, presenting in deliberative session a recommended structure for the new school, a visual for the new school, what the new school could look like. And then a year from February, presenting, you know, the final option for consideration. And then hopefully in a March vote in 2020, we would get support from the community. It will require 60% plus support to build a new school. And, you know, so we're putting a lot of energy and drive behind that effort. So that's the major goal for the Board. The second goal for the Board really is the strategic plan. So we've been working on the strategic plan replacement now for a year. Sounds kind of ridiculous in some ways because the current plan doesn't end until June, June 30th, but as you guys know, trying to bring consensus and bring community voice into a strategic plan is a process. And so we spent all of last year with focus groups. We had community members, representatives from town government, representatives from the business community, parents, non-parents. We've had students and teachers and administrators all working on the strategic plan. We'll be giving the school board a draft of the strategic plan actually by the end of the month. It'll be the first meeting November or the end of October when Todd and I and Sue Caswell, who just walked in, Business Manager, and Catherine Plourde will have taken all the work from all the departments, whether it's transportation or child nutrition or the high school or the elementary schools. There's about eight departments within the school department, and we'll put in the finishing touches on our final draft, and we'll present that to the school board in about a month. And the school board will then workshop that strategic plan, they'll ask for clarification. They may add things that we hadn't thought of or ask for refinements of some of what we put down. I expect the school board will adopt the new five-year strategic plan probably in February. So they'll have it for several months for them to workshop it. And then one other thing that the school board asked me to do in this school year was to build a recruitment plan where we could hire diverse staff, going back to the whole issue of race and the fact that, you know, our minority students don't have adult representation for their particular race. And so we're working on a recruitment plan that would bring in a variety of staff members so that our students have adult peers, adults to look up to and model. So those are the major goals that we're working on this year. As we think about the new middle school, going back to that topic, one of the things that came out loud and clear in our community is the building, you know, it has to be a sustainable building, that we think about how we could turn this new building into a green building, potentially making it net zero or even net plus, and making sure that the new school meets our students' needs but also is affordable. So it's always a balance when you're envisioning a new school. Obviously, we have to always be mindful of being efficient, but at the same time providing the programming that our students need. So really, that's my brief, and literally very brief tonight.
It was brief.
And I'd be glad to answer the questions that the Selectmen have.
I have a question. Since you've answered the diversity, what is the demographics of the student population?
Sure. About 1% of our students are black, about 3% are Chinese, and then it's about 1% of all others. So we don't have a very diverse student population, but we have even a less diverse adult teaching population and support staff population. So we want to make sure that we're representative of our students as well.
Which one do you think is gonna grow more on the demographics?
You mean in terms of...
Percentage.
Well, you know, it's hard to say because, you know, New Hampshire, Vermont, and Maine are predominantly Caucasian communities. So in all cases, the minority population is pretty small in northern New England. So I would say probably it's gonna be pretty stable. You know, the university really is the reason we have as high percentages as we have of Chinese students.
And the second question, we had talked about the addition of these schoolrooms in Masway. That'll provide more balance between the two?
Yeah. So six years ago, Mohermet had a population of about 417 students, and Masway had about 295. And with the school board still here, what we've done is we've tried to balance our classrooms around their school board policy, which for K1 and 2 is a ratio of 20 students to one adult, and then for the upper elementary, it's 22 students per adult. Right now, in grades 2, 3, and 4, both schools are hovering between 20 and 22. Mohermet has 22 in all of those classes, and so the Board has made a decision that it wasn't going to overpopulate Mohermet again. And so about 118 to 120 students who attend Masway actually come from Madbury or Durham, which is a difference from where it was six years ago. So both elementary schools really represent both communities. I would say that still the Masway School is predominantly made up of residents of Lee, but about 1/3 of them are no longer residents of Lee. And I would say, you know, when we get to Mohermet, the town that is the dominant town is Durham because Madbury is such a small community. Traditionally, Mohermet has been the elementary school of both Durham and Madbury, but over the last couple of years, we've really made a deliberate shift in order to keep the class sizes reasonable in both schools.
Would you say that both schools are built to their capacity in a sense? I'm sorry, both physical structure?
Yeah.
Because we just added four.
Yeah, for sure, Mohermet is at capacity, and Masway would have been had we not added these four classrooms. So by adding these four classrooms, it gives us two classrooms to grow into, and most likely we'll grow into one of them next year. So we have just one classroom worth of wiggle room after next school year, and the same thing will be true of Mohermet. So we've gone from a bursting-at-the-seams, overpopulated Mohermet to both schools pretty much at capacity. And, you know, the definition of a full schoolhouse is about 80%, and I would say that Mohermet's probably closer to 98%. And Masway, without these four classrooms, would have been the same. So bringing these four classrooms in was an important part of being able to balance the classroom enrollment between the two elementary schools. Thank you.
Good question.
Yes, Scott?
Once we'll stay on with the population issue. You said the total population is 22...
2205 with the PEP kids.
2205, and it's never been higher, so...
Well, it was higher long before I was here. In the 90s, it was around 2,600, but this is...
Well, you were here.
Yeah.
So going forward, what is the projections from the committee that puts it those?
Yep, the Long Range Planning Committee, and you guys may know this already. If you do, I apologize for repeating information you already know, but we have a Long Range Planning Committee in the district, and it's made up of community members who take the cohort survival method, which basically you're predicting how many kids are gonna stay in a grade, and then how many of those kids will move forward, and then how many kids move in. And so anything greater than 1.0 means you have kids moving in. The unique thing about our district is we do have youngsters coming and going at the elementary schools, but our net is around 1.0. It doesn't exceed that. But when we hit the middle school and high school, that's where we start gaining students. For whatever reason, the in-migration of students, the net in-migration for students in the middle school and high school is actually higher than the elementary. You know why that is? I think part of it is the high school. I think people want their children to attend to a reserve high school. So I think it's part of the reputation of the school system. I think that when parents make moves, like when they change jobs, they try to do it between the elementary and middle school years or middle school and high school years because once your child is a teenager, it's that much more difficult to change locations. So I mean, those are some of the best guesses I have, Scott, on why our enrollment starts net increase in the middle school and high school.
But for subsequent years, are you anticipating more than 2205?
No, I think it's, you know, every time that I look at the long-range projections for the... So when I first looked at them six years ago, we were supposed to be below 2,000 now. Part of that is the reason that didn't occur was the tuition agreement we had with the town of Barrington. So next year, for example, we anticipate 148 students from the town of Barrington, tuition students, which benefits not just the school system but the towns because that's revenue that we wouldn't have had seven years ago that we have now. So I anticipate that we'll be above 2,100 before the next five years. Now, there is a caveat, there's always an asterisk, right? Because sort of like the stock market, you can predict the past perfectly, but when you look into the future, you know, you're basing that on what happened in the past. So I would say that the asterisk is we had something happen this year that hasn't happened literally for the last six years, and that was a much smaller kindergarten than we anticipated. And so whether that's a trend or whether that was a hiccup, we'll find out, but it takes about three years for us to figure out whether it's a trend or not. So we only have one year's worth of data, and so we'll know by March whether that kindergarten, small kindergarten, was a fluke or not.
My last question, can you tell us a little bit more about the award that Masway received?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm surprised you didn't mention it.
I am so sorry. I had it written down too. So something for all of us to feel very, very proud of. Masway, this is... So I had been characterizing this as Masway is the only elementary school in the state of New Hampshire to get what's called a blue ribbon award from the federal government, and that's on academic achievement. But Carrie, the principal, corrected me and said I was being too conservative. It's literally the only school in the state of New Hampshire, middle school, high school, private school, or charter school, that was so honored by the federal government. Essentially, what that means is that their academic performance was strong in every category, whether the children were special needs, whether the children were children of color, whether the children were poor, or whether the children were came from rich families. So in order to get this particular award, you have to have achieved academic progress in all subcategories. And Masway School is the only school in the state to be celebrated. So quite an honor.
Thank you.
Great timing, that's a great way to close. Unless Carrie's got a question.
So I have here, you're gonna talk about the funding fairness?
Yeah. So a lot of activity going on across the state of New Hampshire. Communities really getting frustrated with the lack of progress in relation to the funding of public schools, and this has actually been motivated by Select Boards and councils across the state, not school systems, although obviously the school systems have been very supportive. There've been a lot of workshops, and essentially what they're trying to do is get Concord to recognize that, you know, there's a direct relationship between how much you fund schools via property tax and the actual property tax that people pay. So, you know, I came from Maine seven years ago, and Maine provides about $9,000 per student, and New Hampshire provides about $3,600 per student, give or take. What that translates directly into is increased taxation on the property level. So Select Boards and councils across the state have been super motivated to try to change that dynamic in Concord. And so you may be getting notices from the municipal association about these various meetings that are going on around the state, most recently in Rochester, about coming in and listening and become more active in terms of supporting increased funding for public schools in Concord. And, you know, if you live... I mean, I can give you an example. I had two houses and 128 acres in the center of Maine, and my total taxes for those two houses were in land was $3,600 because those towns aren't putting that kind of property tax burden on the property taxpayer to fund schools. And in our school system, as you all know, we represent the largest item of tax dollar. So it's an attempt by Select Boards and municipalities across the state to change that dynamic.
Good, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. See you soon, Scott.
Are you buying lunch? Do I have to bring my lunch?
Yes, sir, I will provide you lunch.
Do I have to sit in those little chairs there?
Barry and John said please feed Scott.
Oh, just me.
It'll be fine, but...
You just don't gotta sit in little chairs.
Still gonna sit in little chairs. No, we'll be in the library, should be better.
Oh, those chairs are open.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you much.
Pat Jenkins.
Two good things out of that. We have a blue ribbon school, and Scott gets fed. Wow.
Yeah, it's important stuff.
You oughta make sure that was public.
Didn't want to be left out. Patricia Jenkins Heritage Commission, obviously. I understand we have an application from Donna Eisenhardt to be appointed an alternate to the Heritage Commission. We have Spot. We welcome her. That's fine. I do ask that at the same time Ann Jenison be moved into a full member. She was taken out of full membership and down to alternate not too long ago because of our numbers, but now that Dave Meker is no longer on the Board...
Move her up to a full member.
Please do that, and welcome Donna. Anything else we...
No, good with them.
I think one of the things that, just so that the Board is aware, that the Heritage Commission would like the Board to consider increasing the membership of the Heritage Commission from the five that was originally voted in, I don't remember how many years ago, to the eight that's allowed under statute. So I think that was something that we would like the Board to consider.
Yes, I understand that has to come as an article. So if we could put that on, let's not forget to do it when the time comes. Appreciate that, too. It's a very active group, and we'd like to use as many townspeople as we can to keep it going.
Yeah, I do support that. Volunteers are interested, we'll take them.
Seven plus five.
Absolutely. Okay, sorry. I take that back, seven.
Seven.
Yeah, eight always...
You gotta have a voting majority.
Need to amend this?
No.
Just this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I make a motion, a move to approve a full three-year alternate membership appointment to Donna Eisenhardt to serve on the Heritage Commission.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Me again.
You again.
Good evening. So JAMCO Excavators was the low bidder for the James Farm Fire Pond, and at the time when we did the fire pond bidding, our town engineer suggested that we keep the existing overflow pipe that was there. So they did do that, and then a few weeks after, when the fire chief went out to check the levels of the pond, he noticed that there was a hole blown in the pipe. So now the pipe that we didn't change, but now we should have changed, needs to be changed because the pond won't fill. So I asked JAMCO, they were the most likely person to ask, they gave us a price, and I need, you guys are the agents, to expend, so I just need approval to do that, and they will come in as soon as they can, hopefully at the beginning of next week, and change that out so the pond can fill and we can use it. And next time, we'll change the pipe up from the start.
So this proposal that we have takes care of...
Correct.
Everything?
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve James, or JAMCO Excavator proposal to replace the steel corrugated drain in the James Farm Fire Pond for the amount of $5,502. Can I have a second?
Second. Discussion, discussion, source of funds?
I think...
Source of funds? Let's see, expend funds from the Fire Pond and Cistern Capital Reserve Fund.
Friend, they...
That's fine. That's fine.
I have a question, though. If you had priced it to begin with, would it have been cheaper in the long run?
It would have been a little cheaper because they have to move all their equipment back.
Yes.
Sure?
Yep. Lesson learned.
Live and learn.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We need to vote. We need to vote. We need to vote. I'm sorry, we need to vote. Oh, we need a vote, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask Carrie the question? Is the lamprey one completed?
No, they're just beginning that the rain has held them up. Tamarack.
Oh, tamarack.
Yeah, they were held up from getting sign-offs, and then they were held up from the rain.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Aken.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here tonight to ask and request to update our security cameras at the transfer station for safety reasons and for illegal dumping, et cetera, any issues, problems that occur over there, because we have a lot of blind spots, too. That's the other issue, too. I have the three quotes, I don't know if you have those. Any questions on...
Well, I guess I have a question. I don't understand, we're gonna put in a security system, basically a camera system?
Camera system.
And who's gonna be watching the screens?
We watch them, and in case there's an issue or a problem, we end up investigating it, look at it, and plus, you know, help Tom out, too, in the long run.
But are you, is it looking for something very specific relative to a problem you're having, or...
Pretty much, more of basically accidents that occur or residents. We got a lot of traffic flow going through there, and we got a lot of residents roaming around. I'll probably choose my answer better than me.
Basically, you have a huge liability up there with the amount of vehicles and the foot traffic going back and forth. You need a better security system to keep people in check, to be able to review if somebody's claiming a slip and fall accident. We've had several incidents where people are going in the undocumented areas and dumping AC units, which can cost the town a lot of money to dispose of. It just makes sense to have these, you know, security system in place...
It just makes sense to, to have these, you know, security system in place. It's, it's going to protect the town in the long run.
Good.
So, are these strategically placed?
They will be. I've, I've gone over it with Toby, met with the, some of the vendors, where we thought they should be, cameras and, you know, they don't need to be watched all the time. They're recorded.
What's the retention span on? How long?
It's, it's going to be whatever they want to set up. Usually 30 days is usually, is 30 days. So, that'd give us time if somebody said, oh, this person backed into me or the town's bobcat hit my vehicle or whatever, you can pull the video up and, and see what's going on, keep an eye on the, you know, there seems to be coming more and more issues at the swap shop with parking, things like that. Be able to keep an eye on that better. It's just on a liability standpoint, with the amount of traffic, vehicles and people up there, it makes sense to have a good system.
So, this is something you were recommending as well?
Well, I've always felt they should have it up there. You know, when we've been called up there to review the current system for instance, it's been useless. So, I had mentioned to Toby that that's one thing that they needed to look at. That's why I often do.
Is this the same company that has the security system, the camera system here?
I don't know if, if you got a bit from them. We did give them the information. So, I see this one here is from the company that just installed the video equipment downstairs. I'll give it to Toby. I don't know who exactly all came in, but I know the company we use, our Plastoc, did a good job.
No, I was just wondering if there's a benefit to having one?
Oh, I'm sure there would be. So, I can give it to Toby on that. We have a department meeting this week.
I mean, I think it makes sense to have, have one provider.
I was going to ask you about, yeah, maintenance built into this cost?
It, it usually comes with a maintenance contract, warranties, things like that. It's, you know, other than a lightning strike, there's not a lot of maintenance for them.
That's true.
So, that's the only time we've had issues with our systems is the, of the lightning strikes.
Can I ask the chief?
Sure.
Chief, one of the things, I know there was an incident that happened at the transfer station. Somebody did something and from the security systems we have in place, you were not able to see like their license plate and stuff. So, I assume this new system will allow you to see the license plate?
So much better.
And also to correctly identify individuals that might be?
Well, that all depends on shadowing, blue light windows and things like that. But it'll, it'll certainly enhance our ability to be able to at least get a picture of the vehicle, a good picture, post it to Facebook.
Yep.
Or be able to keep looking for that vehicle again.
Yep.
So, yeah, absolutely. Because the, the current system now, if you, you can even pull the video up. It's just the placement of the cameras is horrible.
My other question is in terms of, so Toby, you said there's not going to be somebody sitting there monitoring this. This is going to be recorded.
Right.
So, I guess my question would be, why are we, and I don't know if this is a possibility, but why are the cameras being able to be zoomed, turned and stuff? Why can't we have just stationary ones? I would think that would be a cheaper price for those.
Oh, you could, you could go with just stationary cameras.
Well, as far as I know, the quote says that they pan and zoom and?
Oh, yeah. We wouldn't, we wouldn't need anything that elaborate. Stationary cameras with good, high resolution on them.
Yep.
Is, if they play strategically, you know, you want to get the vehicles as they come in, the back, you get all the plate numbers as they come in. We, we talked about the placement of the cameras, but yeah, you wouldn't need a, a system. We don't have the zoom cameras here and they're great.
So, could, could we ask you to work with Toby and the town administrator to tighten up that particular proposal?
Absolutely.
Because I remember seeing some things in there. One is a toggle control for the zoom and the panel and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think it's something we need, but I don't think we need all of that.
Well, that's only good if you've got a man. Well, this incident's already happened. You can't zoom in on anything, so.
So, if we're not manning it, so?
Yeah, we'll work on that and I'll make sure that the company, Plastoc, that did ours, gets a chance to come up here and, and on it.
So, do we don't know if, one of the three quotes you got is from this company?
You have a certain amount of zoom capability just within the software.
Right. Yeah, right. But this had, there was a?
Toggle.
Yeah, there was a whole bunch of expenses and usually cameras that are not movable are cheaper than the ones that aren't.
Yeah, we'll take that up.
Yeah. Since this is on a rush issue, we hear the tablet and provide a little bit more opportunity. So, I think that's probably a good thing to do.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
So, Selectman Hoodby.
Contacting the municipal association, the document is still not ready.
Wow.
It should be ready this Wednesday. It's going to be released when the news link goes out. So, when it comes out, we can send a copy to everybody, but it's not ready. It's a conversation I had with her last Friday, so I can't tell you this day.
Town Administrator Julie Glover.
Oh, no, we skipped number eight.
Did we? I'm sorry. My eight is Selectman Hoodby.
Yeah, but it's a different item.
volunteer. I'm sorry. I apologize. Volunteer of the Year nomination.
Earlier, we gave the lifetime achievement award to Sharon Meeker and that was great, but I think we need to consider, as we have done previous years, to have a volunteer of the year. So, if we can put something to the department heads and/or committees, commissions, to see if they'd like to nominate anybody for that particular work. Usually we give it out in December, so we should probably start now in terms of process.
We need to have a deadline for when we want to have a?
When would you like it?
Nomination. I don't know.
Mid-November?
November.
Yeah.
Later than November first or?
Uh, like, give them like?
Mid-November or something like that.
Mid-November?
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure what that date is, but, and I think that would give them enough time and then when we meet the end of November, we can consider the particular proposals.
While we're on this area, is there any movement on the Boston Boast King?
Well, we, we think we know.
We think we know.
But we put a request out via the e-cryer, so I guess we might want to wait just a little bit longer to see whether anyone else knows of anyone else to nominate.
Did you contact our recently retired individual employee?
The town historian?
Yes, the town historian.
Who is available 24/7, we've learned.
Really? Wow. I'm impressed.
I've confirmed what the birth dates are to people that have them and who's similar to the other. And that's as far as I've gotten with those people.
Okay. But you didn't think of anybody else?
But no one's come forward with anybody else that have put the feelers out.
Okay.
All right. Julie Glover, town administrator.
The Lee Circle Water Agreement. As you know, we've been having meetings off and on with the town of Durham and UNH Water System and the state relative to the project to bring water from the town of Durham to the number of businesses at the Lee Circle who are currently contaminated with MTBE. If you don't mind, I guess I would have Karen Rossi come up to the podium in case she can answer questions, but I might not be able to. She and I have both been involved in this. The engineers that are working on the project drafted this agreement for the Durham UNH Water System. I then received a copy and I decided it might be helpful for you to see the progression of notes and comments as it got passed between myself, Ms. Rossi and April Tallin, who is the town of Durham's engineer. So, at this point, I felt that it was important to bring this to the board. It's gotten to a point where we might be getting close to agreement, although I honestly don't know whether the Durham Town Council has seen any version of this. And there are still some questions yet to be answered, specifically whether town of Lee users are going to be charged a surcharge. They said that there's some RSA that allows that, but I have not yet been given what that RSA is. There's some mention in here about, that would suggest that the town of Lee is going to be responsible for some costs on this project, but we're not. And then maybe just some other details of the agreement. Although the agreement itself, and you'll see in the notes, says that the addendum that was issued in 1987 would continue to be in place, the latest communication that I received from Ms. Tallin was asking whether we really still need that agreement. What that addendum did was protect wells that were in existence at the time the agreement in 1984 was executed. If they had any problems at all with their well, meaning did they think that the existence of the Lee well was taking water from them, there was a process in place for them to contact Durham and have Durham do something about it. I don't know that we would want to get rid of that addendum, but that certainly would be up to the select board. I couldn't find anything. First off, I couldn't find a list yet that said what the properties in that radius are. And so, I certainly can't find that there's any record that there ever was an issue. I haven't heard yet from Durham whether they have any records. So, it's possible that there's never been a problem, but I don't know that we want to take that protection away from whoever those wells are.
I don't think I want to get away any protection.
Right.
I think it's ridiculous to leave it in case something does happen. Are you feel comfortable, is both of you, that they've responded to all your? I, I do appreciate letting us see all this so I can follow, follow through, which I'm beginning on.
I think that I've resolved for myself the question. It's on the first page. It's one of the whereas's, maybe the second to last whereas, that says that the extension will be located in the town of Lee's public right-of-way. I believe that all of this is on state, in the state right-of-way.
I would.
I mean, the existing water line might, oh, no, that's all, that's all state.
Angel Road is a private road, but this, this is coming out of, this is going on their property and then straight down Route 4. So, I agree. It's not in the town's right-of-way at all.
Not in the town's right-of-way. If it were, we'd have other state statutes and a process that we would have to follow before the select board can approve it, but I don't believe that it's in the town of Lee's right-of-way.
We need to get some, some legal input to resolve it.
And I haven't done that yet because we, I was still going back and forth with Durham about the questions.
There's come this precedence and also whether their state?
Right. I also wanted the board to see it in case the board wanted to change anything, add anything, delete anything before I had the attorney take a look at it.
On this comment, the town of Lee will be giving up its current right under the existing agreement to a 15% reserve view?
Yeah. And that's why I included a copy of both the original?
Yeah, I don't want to give up any rights.
84 agreement. Well, in the, in that 84 agreement, if the capacity, the well went above, what was it? 700,000, then we're entitled to 15% of the yield, not 10%. This agreement does away with the 15%. What, what was frustrating for me with this agreement and the meetings we went through and I finally, I think this agreement finally addresses that, that it kept referring to the Lee well. And I kept saying, you can't, you can't just tie the water to the Lee well. It's the, it's the entire system. So, in other words, if the Lee well shuts down, you're not shutting down all of the town of Lee users. And they kind of finally seemed to grasp that and so changed the language in the agreement to state that it's the system. But, but we are still going to be held to the 10% of the daily yield.
Yes.
So, we have a couple of users on the Durham system right now. I think it's, is it 10 MTBE?
Yes.
Okay.
It keeps changing.
Because that's a moving target, but there are 10 MTBE contaminated properties that are going to be connected. And then after that, there might be other companies that want to be connected to the Durham system. They're going to keep an eye on the 10%. And let's just suppose it's the two or three people that are already connected, the 10 MTBE, and let's suppose they add half a dozen more. Well, if they see that they're at that 10%, they're not going to let anyone else get connected to the system. But I did make sure they understood, because that was confusing in the original draft that I received, because they were still tying it to that 10%. What are you going to do? Shut off those 10 properties just because the yield? Oh, no, that's just for future connections. So, they are committed to connecting the 10 that the state has identified.
But what if there's one that's a major draw-off compared to somebody else?
Well, they've done their analysis and I think I included that in here and they don't think that it's going to come anywhere near, the usage is going to come anywhere near the 10%.
What they did in the very beginning was they took the areas that the line is going to go, they took all the vacant sites and they did a build-out, a worst-case scenario of all those vacant sites. If they were to tie onto the system, what their estimated uses would be for the day, usage would be. And they came up with an X amount of gallons per day.
This is going to go into the surplus, right? Or we have some development?
Correct. And it includes the developments, worst-case scenario.
You're the one with the major expansion there?
Yes.
The one with the restaurant?
Yes.
For posters?
Yes. Yep. April has actually reached out to them last week trying to figure everything out and lay out plans. And because they have their plans, they're working out there on site. So, in December or January, we're going to have a meeting with Ms. Tallin is the engineer for Durham. So, she's going to meet with the developer and myself and probably Ms. Glover and go over there because they're going to be one of the first ones to hook up. And they're doing their project now.
So, as we tap into this and we get water supply, we're also, I'm just technically followed through, does the amount of concentration MTB ever dissipate?
No, it's actually, as Ms. Glover said, that it's a kind of a moving target. And when they originally started this study, the Walgreens was not contaminated. And then recently, two years ago or a year and a half ago, has been detected and it's now on the, and it must have been when they dug, tried to dig out the more of the soil and they pushed it into the bedrock and make it worse. So, Callie Oris is in the process of being tested now because where it's crept up to Walgreens, it may now be on their site. So, they're in the process of being tested to see if they meet the parameters.
So, what happens to the people if it keeps creeping and they can't tap in?
I don't know. Don't know. Well, I don't want to say that's the state's problem, but I mean, this is, it is the state's problem and that's why they're doing this. That's why they paid, they're paying for this work to be done and they're giving Durham, the Durham UNH Water System, a million dollars?
Plus in, plus improvements.
For their new water treatment plant.
And explain to me again why we didn't tap into the market basket wells?
That was 2007 that we were supposed to do that and I don't, I forget what the answer was. It was, that was Roger Kilek who did that as a separate?
Those are extremely high yields.
We mentioned, or I mentioned that at one of the very first meetings with the gentleman from the state and they weren't?
They weren't interested.
Weren't interested.
Kind of interesting. Or at least there's maybe a backup here in the future.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Whoever it is. In section four B, it says that the town of Durham will monitor and report water usage by the town of Lee and will continue to receive reports of when, when we, it doesn't say when we?
We get them monthly.
So, you, you get them already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then on section 11. One, two, three, four, four, four down. It says representatives from the town of Lee and the town of Durham and the town of Lee shall meet on, in any needed basis to discuss operational facilities. Have you ever done that?
No, in the current agreement, it said we'll meet yearly, isn't it?
Right. The current agreement from 84 says we'll meet yearly and no one can record a, ever meeting about it.
That's interesting. The last thing I have is there's no mention, and once again, it comes back to in terms of us being tagged for costs. It doesn't say anything about, and I assume, and you can get in trouble with that, replacement and maintenance expenses. I assume they'll take care of all those because at some point, they're going to have to replace the mains.
Correct. And they worry about that.
They sure do. So, they did the system turnkey.
Yep.
And they start collecting money?
Yep.
That day. And then those, because we've discussed this, those fees and the connection fees from new people that they get are supposed to go fix line, this is not supposed to cost the town of Lee anything.
Okay. So that's included, so twenty-five years from now, Durham says, hey, you've got to replace the mains, well, your part of this is going to be.
Nope. We've talked about that many times.
And the last thing I had is, and I think it's, whoever, what is this, VTD twenty-two, says place over discussion and further detail pending values of rate study SDC. So at some point, that's on page, it's under nine, it's a comment off to the side.
Yeah, I think that was the engineer's comment.
Oh, that's the engineer. So at some point, they're going to do a rate study? And I, so I assume, you know, if you live in the town of Durham, you can vote and say, hey, I don't want my rates that expensive, but the town of Lee, those people in there will have no voice.
Correct.
Correct.
So is that something that these people, they're getting linked up, are fully aware of?
You know, Karen and I have talked about that.
I mean, they're going from not paying anything for water to going to be paying every month for their water, so, I don't know.
Well, that, that would something that I would want those people to be aware of from day one, that says, okay, you're going to join this, but in the future, you will have no say in terms of your rates, you're going to have to pay whatever they say. So just so that we're on board, so they don't come back to us and say, wait, wait a minute, hey, let's have taxation without representation or something.
Have that with cable and everything else, we're having like say.
Now, what do you mean say?
Say pleasure around here.
There's a difference between having no say and knowing it versus having no say and don't thought I had say.
I agree.
So that could be explored.
Where can I live and have stay and my water?
You own your well.
Theoretically, you can go to your city council and voice your opposition to a rate increase.
Yeah, well, do the, do the users get any kind of update relative to them hooking up?
I don't think most of them know about it.
I mean, what's going to happen when they just all of a sudden, somebody's going to walk in and say, well, you know.
I assume, I know a couple of, I've spoken with a couple of them, and they know, four and four, he knows about it, and the gas station, they know, the shopping station, they know about it. Other than that, I don't know who knows about it.
But we can ask the state, I mean, again, it is, it is a little odd where this is a, this project is completely driven by the state of New Hampshire DES. We, we're talking about it, obviously, because we have that old agreement, and it's coming through late, but it's not our water system, we're not paying for it.
But we have X number of Lee residents that are impacted by.
Well, there's only maybe two or three residences that are on the system, and they've been on it.
A while, yeah.
Since eighty-four. It's the businesses that are new.
And it sounds great to the businesses, the two businesses, four and four, he really, he's looking towards retirement, so he feels that this will help sell his property for commercial development. And sure, but you're not, you're not, nobody's paying for water now, and then they're going to have to start paying for water, it's a big difference.
The other thing I'd like to say is I concur with Selton, of course, that we should not be giving away any of our rights that are in the current agreements.
Okay.
So any.
So you want to keep the addendums?
Yes, yes.
Okay?
Yes.
And the fifteen percent language?
And the language in there that's based on rainfall and whatever, there's a whole thing in the town plates when it goes to fifty.
And the other is, keeps talking about two thousand eight hundred foot radius, right, of protective zone?
Mm-hmm.
Has that ever been remeasured or anything, or is it, that was done eighty-four? How do they know that's still intact? You know, when there's drawdown of the well, sometimes the radius pulls in.
Not that I know of, but there's also, was, we were encouraged from Gary Lind, who's driving this, excuse me, was driving this until he retired in August, from the state, that we should strongly look into conserving the Peters property, because that has a large aquifer that feeds this aquifer, it's all part of the large aquifer. So the town of Durham is going to encourage us to preserve the Peters property, one hundred and twenty-three acres, I think.
Can you check with Durham and see if there's ever in their records a complaint from a Lee resident about something happening to their wells? I don't remember, but I would.
I've not seen anything, but yeah, we'll ask.
I would think they would have something in their records if somebody complained.
So we just need to take the pause period, see what's going on, and get some legal opinions? Well, yeah, this has to go to legal, so. It also says in this old agreement here, that Karen, I'm going, about the old agreement, about the fact that this protective zone, we're supposed to, town of Lee is supposed to protect, so there's no extensive commercial development, everything else, do we have any rules or regulations on this?
We have the conservation district, yes.
In the zoning ordinance.
In the zoning ordinance, we have that. I think, did you add that, or you're going to add that to?
I did add it.
It's been added to the agreement.
Okay, good, just wanted to make sure.
But it would be good to know the protective radius and identify all those properties.
Two thousand eight hundred and eighty-four, it could have, maybe, I think, if we can have their town engineer give us a, basically, see if there's any changes at this point.
And outline the sites?
Would be, well, it'd be good to outline a site, because they do talk about the number parcels that you talked about, and then, it would be nice to know, this stuff will all be public sooner, they need to de-cried, so everybody knows what's going on. At least they'll know they're one of the parcels that were within the two thousand eight hundred, you know, foot radius.
Great.
Back then, it said it was seventy-five properties, but.
Yeah, it'd be totally different now.
Well, it would only cover the wells that were in existence at the time the agreement was executed in eighty-four. So even if somebody moved in and built a new well, it wouldn't be covered by this agreement.
At least they would know it, I mean, the more facts they have, the better, if it is the one. Okay, let's move on. Public safety complex sign update, should we look?
I'm going to turn that over to the town secretary, because she's been working on that project.
So the board had asked to dig a little further into this, so I did, and I called both the company, well, first I called the company and spoke to a representative from there, to confirm a lot of things that we already spoke about the last time, which was, yes, all the signs have multi-colors, they scroll, they're programmable, they have four different fonts, they're all weatherproof, they've got the three-year warranty, lifetime phone, technical support, they come with the mounting brackets. Now, they said that the wireless went up to a hundred and fifty feet, which I thought might bring me inside the building from the front, but then I spoke to the principal from Epsom Central School, who, they did buy a sign from this company, he couldn't say enough good things about it, he loves the signs, they bought two, so what I didn't realize is, these signs are only one-sided, my bad. So they got two signs, of course, and put them back-to-back like this, so that when you're driving, obviously, when you're driving by, you can see both sides. About three years ago, they bought these two, and they love them. Now, he does the programming, so he was, he had the information to give me personally, and he says that he has to actually go outside, he has to get closer to the sign than a hundred and fifty feet. He says ten feet, which, that surprised me. But he got it three, three years ago, so maybe the technology, technology has changed in three years, I'm hoping, because they advertise anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred, and the guy told me a hundred and fifty on the phone, so I'm thinking, that's a big difference between ten feet and a hundred and fifty feet. But anyway, he said it's great, they love it, they have a tiny button that they use so that it, it's up there for, so that car, they can time it just perfectly, so when a car's going by, they can see the whole, the whole message that they want to get out. And he did tell me I could go check it out if, if he wanted to. But I guess I was a little off on the size, because I, in the meeting, I was just going to go out and measure it, and the sign that's out there now is eighty-three inches by sixteen, so I, the sign I was, the signs I was looking at were way, were way smaller.
Too small.
So, yeah, so they have a fifty-three and a sixty-six available at the company, and then that is more in line with what Epsom has, and I looked at theirs online, a picture of it, they have five feet by three feet, five feet by three feet. And so that would be more like fifty-three inches or sixty-six inches, somewhere around there. So the pictures that I put in the packet, as you can see, the prices are a little bit more for the bigger sign, and you have to multiply that by two, because it's not on both sides. It's still, obviously, way cheaper than what we were talking about a year ago.
Do you know how many different messages you can put up?
Um, at a time.
Well, so in other words, let's suppose.
Scroll through different.
Yeah, so let's suppose we had three different things going on in one week.
Oh.
Could we have ice cream social, election, leave fair, or whatever, could, would it scroll through different messages?
Well, maybe, but with people driving by, you wouldn't want that many, because they wouldn't be able to see them all.
Well, they drove by a few times.
They saw a whole bunch of times.
Well, I mean, the, you know, for example, the radar trailer sign shows different messages, and so depending on when you drive by, you might.
You might catch one.
Kind of distance thing with your speed limit and the distance where they can stop seeing it.
I was just curious, I'd see where it would be helpful.
I'm guessing it probably does more than one.
Yeah.
I don't know if we'd want to put more than just a couple on there at once.
Sometimes there's a lot going on.
Yeah, a lot going on.
I mean.
Well, I think you, I think you would like to be able to do at least probably three messages if you could. I mean, I, I'm looking at the sign a little bit different in that, or, or if we have to open up the EOC, et cetera, et cetera, and we can put messages up there relative to, to a warming area or this or that, and rotate those messages up there. So I don't know how many, but I think it would be good to have more than just one or two if we can.
And since we're going to, if we do this, it looks like we're going to end up with two different signs, we can certainly put different messages on the two different signs. We do that now anyway.
That's right.
We do sometimes, yeah. The way they've got it set up now, they've got it wired together, so that when they program it, they just have to program it once, it goes to both. I suppose if you've got two different signs, you could have two different, and program both of them separately, if you wanted to do that.
Can you, can you find out if you can do multiple messages? That'd be one thing. And also, so if the wireless is only ten feet, which even if it's longer, are you going to have to go to the public safety, this building?
Oh, I would have to go, either way, yeah.
So there's no way for it to connect to the internal network?
Well, maybe I could have back-belly, but.
Well, maybe through the wireless.
Well, if it's, if it's a node on the wireless network, if you can.
I'm sure Steve could figure something out, so that she could program it. I, I, you see so many of these signs popping up, I can't see that everybody has to physically go and look at the signs and program it.
Yeah.
So I would imagine that Steve could come up with something, you know, all of our systems here are upgraded, so I can't see that he couldn't do something like that. I'd rather check with him.
Could you talk to Steve Gantin and say, we're considering this, maybe he knows more information?
Because even.
See if that's something.
Our message trailer, we can set up with our cell phone.
Yeah.
From the cruiser up the road, so.
And how far out does the, this building's wireless go outside of the building?
Well, it's up in the parking lot, you, you can hook up up in the parking lot easily.
Okay, all right. Well, Steve, see if Steve can help us.
Yeah, give us a little direction.
He's never worked with this company, I have run it by him, shared it with him, and.
Well, ask him in terms of these wireless issues, and maybe your friend at, what is it, Epsom, can let you know, or representative from the company can let you know if you can do multiple. Might be good to contact the manufacturer too, to say, you know, we've got somebody that has some of it and only goes ten feet, is the new version better than that, or is, you know, just because they say it doesn't necessarily mean it sells it.
Okay. Keep plugging away, Karen.
We're making progress.
Yes, we are. Non-public room use.
Yeah, this is again, the continuing theme of how popular this building is, and how many meetings get scheduled in it on a daily and weekly basis, and again, how much time and effort and angst the town secretary spends on it in trying to make everyone happy and accommodate everyone. So what that has led us to, for example, tomorrow night, there's an ABC Select Board meeting in this room, there's a Lamprey River Wild and Scenic Committee meeting on the first, on half of the first floor, the VFW is meeting on the other half of the first floor, and the Sustainability Committee wants to meet in that room tomorrow night. So I just wanted to ask the board its thoughts on having other groups meet in that room during Select Board meetings. Now, I realize that an ABC Select Board meeting is a slightly different animal, but I just wanted to make sure you're aware of this and what you, what you want us to do.
My opinion is that we need this room available to us, if we need to go to non-public for any reason. So I prefer not to have it available while these meetings are going on, especially with the board of selection. And we do use it quite often as a result of this meeting or as part of this meeting, so I would say that when the board is meeting, the, that room is reserved for, for the board use.
Are regular meetings, or, because the other thing she talks about.
Right.
I would definitely agree in terms of when we have a Select Board meeting, that room is not used.
When we have a Select Board meeting.
How about when the ABC meets with the Select Board?
I asked a question, is there any time that we would need to go in non-public?
We did last week.
You did last week.
Then we should probably.
Then we have to reserve?
We should reserve it for our meeting for the board of selection.
Yeah. I disagree, but that's okay. I disagree.
You disagree.
Of all the years, of all the years that the ABC has met with the board, that's the only one time that I can remember that we've ever done it.
Really?
Yeah.
We might have done it once before, but it's not, it's not usual.
No, it's not usual. And we did it because we were already meeting, and we had a thing we had to.
Well, the only other thought I had about it is, we do record the ABC meetings, the meetings with the ABC, I've never been to a Sustainability Committee meeting, I know they will probably close the door, I don't know how loud it can get, and whether that will actually in fact interfere with the meeting that's going on in here.
That's true.
I think I just try to keep it uniform.
Right, they.
When the board of selection meet, we'll just have that room reserved for us, yeah.
Okay, regardless of the reason or circumstances.
Regardless of the reason.
Okay.
I will disagree.
You have the right to disagree.
Thank you.
I would have too, but with the recording, I didn't think of that.
Yeah. That will certainly lead us to some issues in terms of bumping and priority and who's going to get moved around, so.
What was that?
Well, I just had a call, maybe we could move them into the emergency, the.
EOC.
EOC room.
I would want to talk to the fire chief.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's equipment in there, there are records in there, I'm not sure that that's an ideal situation, you know.
Maybe just this one?
Can we at least let them do it tomorrow night, so we don't have to.
That's up to the board, but.
Because that's kind of short and honest, though.
So you mean, there's temporary, just temporary stay?
Well, it's tomorrow night, so.
Yeah, well, all this one for tomorrow night, since it's, you have a room issue, but you don't have enough time to straighten it out in the future.
Effective October ninth.
There you go.
No, ten.
Ten?
Whatever Wednesday.
Today's the eighth.
October tenth. And then, you know, just be aware, you may hear grumbling as we try to move people around, to try to accommodate them, but it may just be that we cannot accommodate everybody who wants a room.
Well, just tell them this is Jesus' fault and have done it.
When you, when you count rooms, are you including the room upstairs in Town Hall?
No, according to the current policy, only the commissions can utilize the meeting rooms, or meet rooms, because they actually do.
Security.
Yeah, because we can't, you can't secure much of anything in the.
Okay, but if we, so only the ag commission and the.
Ag Commission, Conservation and Heritage Commission.
Do people use the annex conference room?
I think occasionally.
Remember, it used to be down the Conservation Commission.
I think occasionally Karen uses it for maybe like a CIP meeting.
Would that be available to Sustainability?
They can use the library if it's free in the basement, if that's.
I'm just looking at.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, I mean, we just also want to remember, does that open the door now, everybody, and now are we just expanding, I don't want to call it a problem, but are we just expanding the issue, we're now, oh, now Town Hall's available, oh, well now we can meet in the annex, and we'll just get even more requests to utilize our buildings.
If, I mean, if we have, if we have people that want to have a, have a meeting and need a place to go.
I know, I'm just, you know, we, I'm just saying, we already. I know, I'm just, you know, we, I'm just saying, we already, it takes a lot of time to do this. There's a, there's a lot of time of her time taken up with trying to schedule this and then people change their meetings at the last minute and try to shuffle everybody. And let's not forget that this building has a primary use as a public safety complex. And police and fire frequently get short shrift in terms of trying to accommodate everybody, so.
Well, the meeting that we had the other day when we were in that room and the Lamprey whatever was out yet, they never showed up.
Right.
After all that work.
Well, and you know, maybe we just have to, you know, the policy says, hey, if you don't tell us that you cancel the meeting, maybe we just have to get stricter with people and say, hey, you didn't show up for your last two meetings, you're off the list.
Exactly.
Cause it's not fair to everybody that we say, no, you can't have a space when someone doesn't show up for their meeting.
Yeah. Okay, we can ask the town commissioner to put together the policy practice.
At least for a draft form, if you wish.
Let's reword the policy.
We have policies, we just need to enforce it.
Yeah, we haven't.
And we should have policies.
Nope.
Well, let's see what it says.
I don't think so.
Yeah, we just did it. Well, we must have passed it, you must have been on the board or whatever.
They weren't there when the court year was left.
Nineteen eighty-four?
No, it's not that, no, it's, it's actually not that old.
No, I know, I'm just saying. Because they were supposed to be up here, because you said I couldn't have this room, you, so we put it next, that they.
She didn't have the key, right?
Yep.
Yeah, she didn't show up.
That's weird. Okay.
Dun-doo-doo-wah.
Alright.
Bunch of junkyard kids up here.
Let's see, propose, propose amendment to minutes from nine to ten.
So after the minutes were already approved, but reviewed and approved by the select board, Mr. Banks contacted us or making contacted Mr. Budby to say that he thought some sentence he said, he said it differently and Town Secretary listened to the tape, it was still kind of hard to hear exactly what he said, but we've come up with an amendment, um, for that set of minutes if the board is approve, if the board approves it. And then we will just repost the minutes with the amendment. Yeah?
Okay.
Any questions?
If he said, that's what they said?
Well, I mean, we wouldn't amend them if after.
Oh, no, if you could, if you could go to the tape and say, no, that's not what you said, but.
You know, not really, not entirely clear, but.
But the point is, I guess, the library was what was done or not?
Done, done, okay.
And was the fire base because he didn't, they didn't do it.
Right.
I already saw, I'm fine.
Okay.
Need to make a motion.
So, uh, motion, move to approve, have the above mentioned language be inserted into the September tenth, two thousand eighteen, select board meeting minutes. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Two miscellaneous things. One, um, I'm going to be meeting with the L E D conversions representative tomorrow to talk about the bid and to talk about concerns that were raised, namely, what would it mean if we just swapped out the light bulbs? Um, and then Mr. Tappin provided some information relative to the exterior lighting, so I'm going to be going over that with the gentleman as well. So I just want to let the board know that, um, that's where we are in the process. Second item is I, um, received an email today from the chair of the cemetery trustees. It was actually copied communication to, um, Mr. Stevens. And I guess there was a request made recently for a burial. Um, and so the cemetery trustees seem to be asking that Mr. Stevens, as a volunteer, do the layout, which really, again, is the work of the sexton. Uh, and that the new highway supervisor is just gonna do the burials. Now, that's not, that wasn't my understanding from when the cemetery trustees came to us. I understood that they were looking for someone to do that work. So I don't know quite what to do other than to inform Mrs. Banks that that's not the select board's understanding. And we'll see what happens.
Well, but wait, let me understand.
We don't have the casket out in the room.
They're going independently to Randy?
Yes.
Right, and, and Randy is saying yes or no?
I don't know whether Randy is saying yes or no. If I had to guess, I'd say that Randy was saying yes to the layout.
Not the digging?
Not the digging.
So then the question is, are we gonna do the digging?
That's always been contracted out. So I'm not sure, because it's usually Ricky that does the digging, not the layout.
They can contract out too.
Right.
Yes, they can contract out to Ricky to have it done, cause it's never been the highway department that digs the holes.
Correct.
And fills it in.
Uh, they might do the little holes.
The urns, they might have found the urns.
So do we ever worry about somebody out there floating?
I don't know, this came to me late in the day and I haven't had an opportunity to really talk to Mr. Stevens.
Did we ever dig the holes?
Well, maybe years ago, but Ricky's done it, but it's contracted out.
But at the same time, is it R S A, the town is legally responsible?
Well, the cemetery trustees are responsible, it is the responsibility of cemetery trustees. And, and you may recall that, how many towns, what, thirty, thirty-five towns that I polled? And really, half, maybe the town highway or in some places, the town parks and rec. Uh, in one place, it was the school that did it, which seems bizarre to me. Um, and then in all the other communities, the cemetery trustees contracted it out.
Well, they were pretty adamant that they are in control of the sexton.
Yes, they are.
So that's their job. So if they want to contract with Mr. Stevens outside of the town, that's their right. And it's his right to say, gay or make. Uh, in terms of contracting for the hole digging, they can do the same thing that has been done previously and they can contract with Mr. Stevens' brother, Ricky, to dig the hole and fill it in. That's their, that's their right, but the town has nothing to do with that part. The thing that we agreed to is we would continue to do the maintenance.
Yes.
The mowing.
Basically, it's the mowing.
It's the mowing and trimming. Yeah, for the rest of this fiscal year. And during the budgetary process, we'll talk about what we do for subsequent.
So they have not pointed a sexton yet, is what you're saying?
Does it appear that they have?
I guess you have that in mind.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, yes.
So we are at the moment. For the consent agenda, motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Again.
May I, sorry, ask a question?
Sure.
Does it concern this motion?
It does. It's a, it concerns an item in the consent agenda as to whether the select board has any interest in putting Keno on as a warrant article.
No, no.
Okay.
Carrie doesn't get evoked cause he's outboarded?
She does get evoked, but.
I'm sorry?
See, I told you.
I'm sorry, what was I saying?
I said you didn't have to vote, cause we already voted two, no matter what your vote is, that may ain't never.
Well, yeah, but I could do a Budbee and say, I want my, I want my name.
You could, you're good.
I want to be recorded. I want to be recorded as a yes.
Okay, and we have not got a request from any business in town.
No, and we might not have any businesses that qualify, but you never know.
There's a list, there are ones that potentially could. Wouldn't there, there be something in there?
No, that was the list of.
Towns.
Uh, businesses that have a liquor license in one form or another. But even beyond that, the state gaming commission has a whole set of rules for Keno. My general understanding is you have to have a pouring license and you have to have a separate bar and it, you know, it has to be a, a whole thing. Plus, no one has come forward asking.
Okay, that would be my question, if somebody's like chomping at the bit, but nobody's asking, no interest.
They will.
Well, we'll see. They can go to Rochester.
Yes.
No, that's the closest one.
I'll encourage them to come.
Some in Rochester?
Is it Dover, Somersworth? It's right on the board.
I know Rochester.
Somersworth has a very, has the highest, or at one time, it was the highest, uh, revenue per Keno.
But it gets shared, right? Who gets something?
Yep.
Motion's on the floor.
Let's see, what do we have, what, a motion for?
Any discussion?
We just have a discussion.
Anybody want to take one out or anything?
We already did the Keno thing, so.
So it's a, a motion to reject?
No, a motion to accept.
Or a motion to accept?
The consent agenda.
Oh, the consent agenda, I thought we were, we were still talking about the Keno issue.
Which is in the consent agenda.
Resolve the Keno issue.
So a motion to accept the consent, consent agenda as presented, can I get a second?
You already have a second?
You already have one, it's on the floor.
Yeah, it's on the floor, discussion where is that? Okay.
It's right here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Somebody's south?
We, for some reason, were singing the song from F Troop this afternoon.
I was talking to a lady today, well, no, two days, two days ago? Friday, Friday. And, um, she told me her name, and her name, first name is Greer. And I says, oh, Greer, like Greer Garson? And she says, nobody gets that. And I says, wow, I'm gay, I said, Greer Garson, her first name is Greer, her sister's name is Greta.
Greta, Greta.
Yes.
Greer Garson and Greg Garbo.
Parents were movie fans, yes.
Yep. And the brother is Randolph.
Randolph.
Like our Randolph Scott Stevens.
Randolph Scott.
Oh, speaking of which, Randolph Scott Stevens, he's doing his railroad presentation.
Yes.
The first Wednesday at seven o'clock in this building downstairs. Supposedly it's kind of a new, so if you heard it before, there's new information in it, so. Um, refreshments will be served. I'd like that for a plug.
Good plug, good plug.
Just have to move it again. Yeah, in the position two.
Very good.
Oh, the goal, where's the goal?
In the right of way. In the right of way.
In the right of way, right in the middle.
Hold on. I haven't seen the minutes yet.
They're not coming.
There we go.
Sid? Okay, I move to enter into non-public session pursuant to New Hampshire R S A ninety-one hyphen A colon three, two. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll calls required. Mr. Budby?
Yes.
Mr. McCores?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
I move to seal the non-public minutes.
Second.
Roll call vote. Selectman McCores?
Yes.
Selectman Budby?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we don't.
Where are we?
Miscellaneous.
We're done?
Miscellaneous.
Yep. Miscellaneous.
Couple of things, um, planning board meeting on Thursday night, we will be discussing the church love mine.
If you, if you get a quorum?
If we get a quorum. Hopefully that'll go through. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, can I ask a question about that? I mean, they went two meetings in a row, I think there's seven people on the board. They went two in a row without being able to pull together four people.
Yeah, we're, we're missing a person. So we're looking for a replacement as we speak. But you're right, it's kind of hard to get a full quorum lately.
Well, it's seven numbers, but aren't there alternates as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Do they, don't come either?
Don't always come, so, so it's always been a problem. Like anything else, it's hard to get people on boards like the commissions.
Yeah.
But hopefully that will go on Thursday night.
Great.
The second question I had is that, um, we, we are completely out of this with respect to Veterans Resort Chapel. Is that correct? We have no more?
No, we're still working through the court system to clear the title.
To clear the title, I guess.
Clear the title, yep.
And the issue is the reverter clause that.
Well, I'm sure.
It has the reverter clause.
People ask me, I just.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten any letters lately, though. He's, he's doing his.
Yeah, emails.
Election.
Okay.
Yeah, things, there's been nothing, except from the lady, the sergeant.
Yeah.
His lady of.
Is she still living there?
I assume so. His, his, uh, letters to the editor involve his election or his candidacy.
See, did I have anything from miscellaneous, I thought I did, but I don't remember where it was, I guess not.
Um, T C, V C is meeting Wednesday night to finalize the programmatic requirements. So after that, they'll start the whole next phase, um, but, uh, he should have sent, I don't know if he sent it to us already, but the, uh, file version, so we're gonna review those on Wednesday. So that will stop that phase and start the next conceptual phase, so.
So. What, what, what kind of form does that take when you say you're gonna finish the programmatic requirement?
It's basically a spreadsheet that lists out different things and what they're used for, how much space is required. They're gonna use this particular. for, and how much space is required, they're gonna use this particular document to start to develop a conceptual plan in terms of buildings, in terms of layouts of rooms and things like that, so they need that to know what all of our needs are at that particular, so that's, that's their spreadsheets.
So what you're telling me is that all the department heads have approved, they're, whatever they requested, whatever, they're in agreement with the space that's been allocated in that spreadsheet?
Yeah, because we had meetings with all of them, and also, Mr. Tappin's been doing a lot of work with the town clerk and also with the code enforcement person, because there was a, there was a room that was too small, and there was a room that was totally forgotten, so those should be in there now, I haven't seen it yet, I spoke to him this afternoon, and he said he was gonna send it over.
Is that one of the issues, from the, from my point of view, as a member of the board of select, and to make sure all the department heads get what they want, you know, afterwards, there's always negotiations and things, there's cost, but to come in at least the initial phase.
Cost will start to move in.
Yes, it starts to creep in on you, as it does.
But yeah, couple of things, in terms of, we instructed him to move the annex and the historical society out someplace else, put the building staff, have them remain in this building, not in the new municipal building, put the committees and commissions in the renovated Town Hall, not in municipal building. The only big thing, it's, well, not a big thing, it's a small thing, in the library that was kind of like, if he is a children's bathroom for the children's area, so at this point, it's in, but it's a very small space, and we said, you know, if it can be worked into the bathrooms that are there already, because the biggest thing is like child-sized fixtures, but he said, let's leave it in for now, it's a very small space.
So what's the, what's the total square foot?
I don't have those up at the top.
Don't have it yet?
No, one of the things, he, he, like I said, he was supposed to send them after I spoke to him today, and I was like, four thirty, five o'clock, and I hadn't, I hadn't seen them before I left, but yeah, so the library's the sixty-five hundred, Town Hall is a Town Hall, I don't know what that is, the annex is the annex, the only thing, the municipal building, last time, when he and I conversed, I haven't seen it yet, and it's about forty-eight, forty-eight hundred square feet, which is a little bit more than the forty-seven fifty, but less than the five thousand, but we'll, we'll see, we'll see.
And, and the disposition of the annex?
We, uh, we have instructed him to move that with the historical society to someplace else on the, on the property, so the, the historical side, we moved, they use the annex as its extra space, so it would be renovated, well, moved, then renovated and attached, because it would have to have some kind of facilities in it, bathroom, and stuff like that, so, because right now, they use the library, but if they're doing something, the library's closed, where do you go? You don't, where do you?
So what you're telling me is that when you get done with this programmatic review and all this spreadsheet's done, we'll get a copy of it?
Yeah, we can get a copy of it.
Okay, I'd like to have one, when that, at least when that box comes.
Yep.
The second thing, who's making the decision, what's worked for you, which is for the highway department?
The highway department? Yeah, what highway department? Highway?
Well, highway supervisor, are we gonna do anything with the highway at all?
No, highway's not included. It's just the buildings at the town center, so.
So there's no, I mean, is there any, I'm just asking if there's any input taken from board or anybody else, even though there's no modifications going on that building? I just wanna make sure everybody's been touched.
Well, the thing that you, you get the highway department involved in terms of when, because the next phase is gonna be, they're gonna suggest buildings, and also gonna suggest parking.
Yeah.
And one of the things you could get the highway department involved is in terms of the maintenance aspect of that.
Okay, good. And flooring and, and, and.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure they all get touched, so somewhere along the lines, well, nobody ever talked to you about this, they are part of the town, even though not part of the town center, I understand.
Well, with the stuff we did with AG, one of the things, that Randy had these little ears come out from the parking, he says, yeah, yeah, so, yes, you get the highway department involved in terms of the maintenance of that particular parking and stuff like that, and also, you get input from Bill in terms of the sidewalks and stuff like that.
The maintenance, yeah.
So, yeah, in that respect, you could ask the highway department that stuff, but there's, this particular project doesn't touch his offices or anything like that down there, so.
Good, okay.
So, and the next meeting that we have, Kathleen Porter, the community liaison person, will be start to meet with us, so will start to formulate messaging and information flow, so she's gonna attend the next meeting.
And then also, the town administrator's update on the highway supervisor position?
Uh, he's starting next Monday.
And we announce his name?
Uh, yes, Steve Bullock, came to us from the, he's a state of New Hampshire District Six supervisor, field supervisor.
Could you break into the next board of select meeting, so we can welcome?
I can, he's going to be at the Tuesday night budget meeting, so I thought we could use that as the opportunity to introduce him.
And also, could we put a little bit of biography about him in the e-craft? Maybe snap a picture of him as well, if he has it in mind? I think it's good, so people get to know what's going on, so they're not shocked or surprised.
Yeah, yeah.
So is he, uh, he's gonna have to, is Randy gonna get with him to put together their budget stuff?
Budget's already
It's already on?
Been given to the ABC and the select board, I, I think Mr. Stevens told me he would be coming to the budget meeting, but I guess I'd have to confirm that with him, but we'll just have to muddle through somehow.
Okay. Good. That's it for you. Okay. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.